The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, April 25, 2015. Time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this day, the day that you've provided for us. Thank you for the many blessings, Heavenly Father, that you bestowed upon us. As we come together tonight, Heavenly Father, we just ask it, you give this council the wisdom that they need in order to conduct the business of Riverbank in a manner that benefits all. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with each one of them. Just uplift them. Reassure them, Heavenly Father. Just give them confidence in what they're doing. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless the staff. Bless those, Heavenly Father, that needs a touch from you. You know, if it's someone that just needs for you to uplift them, or if there's someone in this staff, in this department, some employee of the City of Riverbank that needs a touch from you, we just pray tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you'll touch them, be with them, uplift them, give them strength, restore their health. Heavenly Father, we thank you, and we ask you to be with each resident. And, Heavenly Father Jesus, we just ask that everything go smooth and according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Consul Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Consul Authority Member District Four Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Consul Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any conflict of interest by council or authority members or the staff at this scheduled agenda to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll proceed to number two, public comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time may not be yielded to another person. Under state laws, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA staff or their public comments.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Campbell. All the work you did to put in that sidewalk in front of the trailer park is greatly appreciated. Now, I don't have any backing, just what they want to do is put up a no parking sign. So I told them to get hold of you. I'm not going to mess with it. And so I take care of that. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to compliment you on a terrific dinner at the Veterans opening. I thought that was out of sight. I really appreciate that. I'm not doing one. Okay?
Further public comment? Seeing none, we move to the consent calendar, consistent of Item 3A, waive readings; Item 3B, approval of March 28, 2017, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority minutes; Item 3B-1, approval of April 11, 2017, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Is there anyone wishing to pull or comment on any of the consent items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to discuss the consent calendar? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for recommendation or action.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Item 4-1, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2017-006 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving development agreement number 01-2015, Haze IV Phase I Tentative Map, APN 062-022-019 and 062-022-022 Residential Project.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. As we went through this project in depth last council meeting, we're happy to answer any questions or go over any other portions of the staff report council would like reiteration on. Otherwise, we leave it up to council for comment.
Anyone from the public wishing to discuss or comment on Item 4.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to this council for recommendation and/or action.
I'll make a motion we approve Item 4.1.
I second.
We have a motion to approve in a second by roll call vote, please.
Consul Members Fossey.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6-1, consideration of a fee waiver or deferral or reduction by adoption of a resolution approving the request by Thunderbolt Wood Treating, Inc. to waive or defer or reduce the payment of deferred system development fee or adoption of a resolution denying the request by Thunderbolt Wood Treating, Inc. to waive the payment of deferral system development fee.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will be giving this report tonight. Before she does, I want to clear up a, what I believe is a misconception related to staff recommendations, especially as they relate to matters that have to do with process. So when you see a staff recommendation on a staff report, I think it's important to recognize that our recommendations are based on the code, and what the code says is the way that it should be administered. So, for example, in this case, the code is quite clear that the new building area is typically assessed, this fee, and so our recommendation follows what the code says. It is not a personal recommendation. It does not represent how we personally feel about the project. It's our responsibility is to represent what the technical document says, and council has the ability to bend and consider those outside of those technical documents. So Donna's going to step you through the history of the project and our analysis.
Good evening, council and mayor. As was said, this is for Thunderbolt Wood Treating. It's a system development fee waiver request. It didn't come up. Oh, there it is. Okay, so what is a system development fee? It's a fee charged for a change in use, new construction, including the expansion or addition of an existing non-residential structure to mitigate the unfunded portion of the determined impact of the development. So where system development fees come into effect here is there was a fire out at Thunderbolt in 2011, and a building was partially destroyed. It was 1,600 square feet, and it was replaced with a larger building. In fact, the building permit total was 6,850 feet. So when we look at charging the system development fees, you get a credit for what was already existing. So we took the, staff took the 6,850 square foot of the building and deducted the original square footage of 1,600 square feet. Then they also deducted 1,900 square feet for patio-type structures, which aren't covered under this building's system development fee. So the building that was assessed was actually 3,350 square feet. So that's the credit and the patio cover that wasn't assessed. So as far as the applicability of the provisions, there is a section that does talk about buildings that were destroyed by fire or natural disaster, removed or demolished, and which, of course, this building was. And this section says that the fees shall not be applicable unless, okay, so the first one is a building permit to rebuild is obtained within one year of destruction, demolition or removal of the structure. And Thunderbolt accomplished this. The fire was in September of 2011, and in April of 2012, the building permit was issued. The permit to rebuild is, has to be obtained by the owner and/or developer of record, and this was accomplished by the LaValve family trust. They obtained the building permit, so that was met. That the exemption apply only to the extent that the permit is to rebuild the same amount of square footage. Well, since this was larger, the original, remember, was 1,600 square feet, the larger was 6,850 for the permit, and then minus the deductions, that's why it came into play here, because the resulting structure was larger than the original. So the original fees in 2012 added up to $26,250.59. At the time that these fees were assessed on that building permit, Thunderbolt did not feel that they were appropriate, and therefore, city staff put a lien against the property while this was kind of hashed out. There was a NEXUS fee study starting up, and there was the thought that possibly the fees would come in lower than what were originally in 2012. Well, that didn't happen. In fact, they almost doubled, as you can see, at $45,781. Since the property had been leaned for the smaller amount, staff determined that they could go ahead and pay that lower amount and get the lien removed from the property. There is a permanent foundation, metal tresses and walls. This is a corner of the inside of the building. You can see the metal posts go into the cement. There's electrical, the building is wired. We've got, you know, functioning doors, and so it is, in fact, a structure. When the soils investigation report was filed with the city, the structure was known as a new barn storage building. So the information that staff had received throughout the permitting process was this would be a storage building. So council has some options. One option, you may determine the new net floor area does constitute a structure and would be subject to the NEXUS fees, as is standard practice in the city. Option two, this council may determine that while the net floor area does constitute a structure, a modification of the NEXUS fees to a lesser amount may be appropriate and fair and within the public interest. The council may determine that the applicant's request is valid. Maybe it's not a structure, maybe it is a piece of equipment and not subject to those NEXUS fees. Or you could request additional information on the matter from staff and/or the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Questions?
I just had a quick one.
Yes.
Before they did the building, do you, do they get, when they file the permits, any opportunity to estimate fees ahead of time at all?
Well, like, for now, if somebody were to come in and replace a building, and they would request an estimate of the fees, if we have an idea from the engineer, an engineer's estimate as to what the project is going to cost, we can figure out a pretty close estimate as to what those fees would be.
My question is, did they give you information as to why they feel it's a piece of equipment rather than the structure, what it looks like?
No, I don't have that, I don't have an explanation for that statement.
I was on the council at the time when the original request, and in that original request, we had discussed reducing the fees, and we, I believe, came to some consensus where water was not to be an issue, because even though it was a larger building, there was no additional water consumption, and I don't believe anything except for water improvement was on your fee, not on anyone else's. The... Would you go back to, I can't, I don't have my glasses. Could you go back to them, please, to the fees? I know we were discussing reducing wastewater, but he didn't come to any conclusion on that. So as we go forward, I believe we should take a look at the 2012 fees, whether or not they are totally applicable, applicable or not. The, however, I do know that wastewater and storm drain systems are very crucial for the city, and that I've asked the council to, to consider as we move forward, making sure that those are imposed as well as police and general government. So, but, and you can question me or the members, I believe there would be some that will be coming up to speak. Any other? This is a, do I have comments from the public?
Thank you for the hearing tonight. I appreciate it. I'm Leonard LaValve. I'm the owner of the property, and we're the owner of the corporation that operates Thunderbolt Wood Treating. I think we have a misconception here tonight. There's already been a precedent set by the City of Riverbank. We built a building in 2000, or our structure in 2006 that was a kiln. All fees were waived on that kiln because it was an attached piece of industrial equipment. 2012, we built another kiln, and it looks like a building, but it's a piece of industrial equipment that's attached, it has to be attached. All fees were waived on that structure. This, the reason that this went like it did is because we assumed at that time the fees were waived. I never knew anything else about fees until Donna sent me a letter. I never knew anything else about fees until Donna sent me a letter. We assumed the fees were waived because this is an industrial spray booth. You gentlemen can come and look at it and see it. You can see the spray equipment that we have in there, and it is an industrial, you can see the the air chambers that take out the fumes from spraying that's approved by the air board. This is an industrial piece of equipment. This is why nobody ever thought that there were any other fees. Otherwise, we would have addressed that responsibly. Because we already had a precedent set, we never assumed there was any other fees other than the electrical fees and the fees that we paid.
In 2012, did you not come to the city council requesting waiver of fees?
I don't remember doing that, but she said I did.
Yes, you did. I was on the council.
Yeah.
You did, and we reduced it, I believe it down, we had it down to about 14,000. Then we said, well, we'll do the NEXUS fee study.
I understand, but I assumed at that time that we were going, because I never heard anything else, Mr. Mayor. I have never heard another thing till Donna sent me a letter.
I have a question.
That there was additional fees.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
According to what I'm reading here, it said that you did protest the fees in 2012.
I can't hear you, sir. I...
Pardon me. My voice, I got a little problem.
Well, I have, I have two hearing aids.
According to what I I'm reading here on our background on my computer, in 2012, you requested that you didn't want to pay the fees, but at that time, so the building could proceed, the city put a lien on your property. Were you aware that the lien was put on your property then?
No, never heard anything about a lien, never heard about additional fees, sir. And otherwise, we'd have made some kind of response to that. The only time we ever heard is when Donna sent me a letter with this demand for payment, which I think is unfair to wait this length of time, this five years later. So I I think we have a situation, first of all, we don't affect the the streets or the public works. We have no water in the building. We have no toilets, so we don't have, as far as storm drain, we have, we have to retain all the water on our property, so we have a, we have a holding tank of 2 million gallons on the property. As far as the governmental and police, it didn't, it wasn't any addition to the to what we were doing. It's it's been an operating business since 1977. So I'm baffled by the 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 fees up there because it doesn't apply to this structure, doesn't apply to this piece of equipment.
I have, I have another question then. Donna, should we have a record somewhere that notice was sent to them in our records back in 2012?
Go ahead, go ahead, Donna. Hey, we're friendly. I mean, we're not...
I've been out there a couple times.
I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yes. My underst, I wasn't on staff at the time, but my understanding is the project applicant is notified.
The applicant was here.
We have no record of any, in fact, I have, I have my my supervisor here.
We have tape of it.
Can't guarantee it, but I definitely can search for it.
At least the staff report.
Yes.
From March of 2012.
The meeting minutes, we have that.
Okay. I would suggest that we just hold this to next meeting with the last report because I believe, sir, you were here.
I was here to protest the fees that were being assessed.
Right. But none of this was a piece of equipment at the time, and we had juggled with that. The water consumption, what we said, yes, you're not going to use any more water. We should not charge you any more water. But the storm water and the wastewater was not because of issues that are from that property.
Mr. Mayor, we have to retain every drop of water because we have a chemical...
Have you had any violations?
Pardon?
Have you had any violations?
No, not that I know of. John, have we had any violations on that?
No, you had no notice of violations during Christmas time?
I'm sorry.
I was there during Christmas time, sorry. But I reviewed some stuff that I took that... I thought we sat down face to face and discussed...
That was not a violation for any water coming off the property. That was talking about our chemical treating plant not functioning properly, and we had to address that, which we did. And we had to bring in batch tanks, which you approved in in the meeting, to to take our water and clean it up.
And excessive rain caused the overflow of into storm water.
We didn't overflow anything, sir. We put in 40 tanks...
Okay. All right. So what we'll do, I think what we should do is to take, get the entire entire report, and if we have a tape, review the tape, let you do that before the staff, because, sir, you were here protesting to, asked us to reduce the fees.
My assumption was that that after that meeting, that it was clear, we paid 8,000 in fees. After that, it was done. We never heard any more, Mr. Mayor.
But you were told at the time we were going to do a NEXUS fee study, and it took a lot longer than what we thought was going to be.
Had I, had I got a report on that, I would have been here protesting, sir.
Okay, well, we'll...
Mayor, we'll, we'll find the meeting video, if it still exists, and the minutes, and the staff report. We'll provide them to the applicant and council.
She, she said that I was at the meeting and I didn't remember that, but if you, if you have the record, I was here, I was here. So I have no problem with that. I'm not denying that I was here. Staff says I was here. You all say I was here, but I would never, I would have come back had you not accepted what I would presented at that meeting.
In my recollection, that it was a building that we were doing.
Pardon?
A building that was being constructed.
Well, there's a misconception because the building, you keep calling it a building.
You called it a building.
The way is the, the, the equipment that burned down was not a building. It was a kiln and a...
All right, we won't argue. We'll just move forward.
I'd just like to finish up. I have the original staff report and have read it, and I have the minutes of the meeting and have read it, and then neither of them does it, does it talk about reducing or removing the water from the equation? And in fact, he, he brings up a good point in that if, when this structure was built, it was going to be a storage building, and now somehow is morphed into a paint or a spray booth, we really don't know what this building could be in 15 or 20 years from now. It could be a high water user, high wastewater generator at that point. And so that's kind of the purpose of these impact fees. This is try to, you know, get them at the beginning to cover future expenses and that... Oh, my mind just went blank.
But I think what you're saying is that we don't assess impact fees in when someone does an internal improvement to a building. We don't assess impact fees. Impact fees are only assessed at the beginning of projects or an expansion of floor space because, like she said, especially in industrial businesses, we don't know in 25 years what, what may be the use there, and we're not going to assess new impact fees at that time. So we'll, we'll find the minutes, hopefully find the video, we'll provide that information and so that we could have a little more historical context to that discussion for council.
So we all agree that number four, our option was number four, for us to come back for further information. That just needs to be on the record.
Yes.
All right, that, I was going to go that way.
Oh, well, okay. I'll beat you to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a recommendation from the council.
I recommend that we table the item until the next meeting, until we do our research on the background that's available to show exactly what's happening.
Which is option...
Including the video.
Which is option four in the report.
All data.
Okay, so we have a motion to...
And I'll second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council members, Fossey.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6-1, personal indoor marijuana cultivation.
Very much, Mayor. So last, last city council meeting, we sat through, I think everybody agreed with a really excellent presentation by Josiah, who's here, who's here this evening from Churchwell White, who's, for those watching at home, is an attorney and a, and also a lobbyist up in Sacramento. He stepped council through the totality of Prop 64 and what that means for cities, at least thus far, and council directed at the end of that to bring back three separate items in subsequent evenings, breaking down each of the components that were going to require some regulation from, from the city of Riverbank. So the first and probably most obvious one is personal indoor marijuana cultivation. Josiah is going to step us through some of what the city can and cannot do based on Prop 64, and then I'll speak a little bit about it from an operational perspective, how regulation would work if that's the way council wants to go.
Terrific. Thank you, Sean. Mayor and council members, thank you for having me back. It's my pleasure to be here with you again to help, you know, walk through these issues. I again commend the mayor and council for a very pragmatic approach to doing this, kind of taking a look first at the personal indoor cultivation, which is existing law, you know, and then moving on to down the line, look at commercial cultivation or other types of businesses. This is especially smart because regulations and final kind of status quo of the law has not been determined as far as businesses go. So, you know, the Adult Use of Medical Act is going to allow retail marijuana sales, and regulations regulating that industry have not yet been, you know, released by agency. So at this point, the only thing a council would have to rely on would be the statute that was passed by voter approval, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, and under that statute, there are some clear designations or signals from in-state law about what a city can regulate when it comes to personal cultivation. So we'll just talk about that a little bit as an isolated issue, personal cultivation workshop. So again, we would want to start by addressing the federal prohibition against marijuana. Again, it's, it's more of a disclaimer at this time, and I won't be as in-depth as I was last time, but it's important to make sure that we understand that marijuana is illegal under federal law. You know, we talked again about being a Schedule I drug, so there are no medical uses accepted by the the feds. Illegal expenses cannot be deducted from liability. I mean, there are a lot of issues still being worked out with this, but, you know, under this lens with which we're examining this tonight, we're talking about the individual user and what the city can do with them. So we'll go to the next slide, again, talking about the federal power to regulate the activity, and I think it's important, and we'll start with line number two, the federal government can criminally prosecute personal possessors and users. So even if the local city here decides to allow or permit or regulate personal cultivation, you know, those citizens would still be subject to penalty or prosecution under federal law. Also, bankers, lawyers, city officials, and those administering the business could be deemed to be in violation of federal law. With that being said, we'll take a look at the state marijuana regulation and allowing this to...
I'm sorry, I said I could be a jailhouse lawyer.
Well, we hope not, but we'll move on, and we understand, this is again, just a brief primer on the, on what we have here in California. California passed the Compassionate Use Act, which was Prop 215. That was 20 years ago, which started a system of, of allowing for some form of medical marijuana in California. That program was expanded in 2004 with the passage of SB 420, and then it was expanded even further in 2015 with the passage of the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. It's a series of three bills here that kind of gave some specific direction on how the medical marijuana cultivation, dispensary, and all the different aspects of the business would be regulated. What's really important today, actually, is the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. That was the 2016 ballot initiative passed by 57% of the California vote, and here's, here's where kind of the rubber meets the road. The first bullet point, the current law as of November 9th, 2016, legalizes possession of up to one ounce of marijuana under state law by adults 21 and over. So this is not something that the local government can control. This is not something that the state government can charge somebody with possession of marijuana if they are possessing less than that amount. So any type of regulation of that would, would really be kind of ineffective and contravene state law. Moving on to the second bullet point, and here's what we're talking about tonight, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act legalizes cultivation of up to six plants indoors for personal use, subject to reasonable regulation by a local municipality. So that means that six plants can be grown indoors without any type of permitting structure or effective right now. So I mean, I'm pretty sure that there were people in California cultivating six plants in a residence, but now it's legal. I'm sorry, prior to November 9th, but now it's, it's legal for them to do so. Also, down the line, they're envisioning a world where, you know, adults 21 and over will be able to purchase marijuana at state licensed businesses, but again, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about those adults who desire to cultivate marijuana in their private residence. So this is a local control chart, and it will pull out kind of the, the crux of the discussion today. As far as personal cultivation, under medical or recreational, right, the local municipality cannot ban the indoor cultivation. So what if someone was attempting to, to cultivate medical marijuana inside? Technically, the local could regulate that activity or ban that activity, but they would by default fall under the protection of the Adult Use of Medical Act if they were only cultivating six plants. So up to six plants, the local really is more in a regulatory position. One other thing that I wanted to mention right on this slide is, I've heard conversations about numerous bills. I think there are about 30 bills right now going through the legislature that are looking to further kind of define or change the marijuana laws right now. So we're still looking at an environment and a landscape that is fast-changing and, and developing. We also know that there's a big push by the governor. Governor Brown has put out a proposal where he's looking to consolidate the two systems because the medical marijuana regulatory system and the commercial or adult use marijuana system are not quite parallel. I mean, well, actually, they are very much parallel, but they're not the same. There are significant differences which create challenges for the locals. So Governor Brown is also working on this issue specifically, and what, what we're hearing is that medical is almost going to go away. You know, medical marijuana will still be available to patients, but they'll be able to get it as a recreational user. There will be no need for medical. That's to be seen. However, as it applies here, now, I can't, it tees up the discussion, and, and I'll kick it back to Sean so that we can kind of get into the meat and bones of it, but essentially the, the question is, does the city want to regulate personal indoor cultivation? And if they do regulate that personal indoor cultivation, the very significant question is, is that regulation reasonable? If that reasonable, that regulation is not determined to be reasonable by a court of law, then obviously the challenge will cause problems for the local municipality who's kind of written that ordinance. So we want to make sure that we're taking a look at the, the issues from all sides of it, and the city is clear in its decision.
Thank you, Josiah. So as, as you said, what I'm going to do is step you through sort of the decision tree that's in the staff report. So most simple question, now that we know that there's not a question of whether or not folks can, that are over the age of 21, can, can cultivate indoors within those parameters, they can. Question for council would be, do you or do you not want to regulate? Now, let's take the, the not for, that's the more simple tree in the sense that if the answer is no, we don't want to, to weigh in with regulation, then the conversation can effectively stop here because any building modifications that they make are still required to get a building permit. That doesn't change anything. We just have no control over, you know, offenders that step outside of, you know, the kinds of protections you'd probably want to put within regulation. So that's option A. Option B, which is the option during our workshops that I'm hearing more from council, is if you do choose to regulate, we've, we've come up with essentially two different options for you, and they're both ministerial permits. Ministerial, for, for those who don't know, essentially means a permit that you can receive by right. As long as you meet the conditions, you get the permit. It's not discretionary. The first option is the ministerial permit with associated inspections. This is the Waterford model. You have a, an example of that ordinance in your, in your packets. This is a very time-intensive model. It's going to require inspectors on site at residential properties. It's going to probably require a lot, quite a bit of plan check, depending on how many changes they are going to make to their systems. From an operational perspective, there's absolutely an impact to our operation, no doubt. We will charge, find a fee and charge appropriately for that, but the fee will not certainly offset the additional staff we would probably need to, to efficiently process it. But with that said, if that's the direction council wants to go... But with that said, if that's the direction council wants to go, we'll find a way to manage that. Second option is a ministerial permit without associate inspection, but with a standard set of conditions. And essentially, the way this one would work is, I'll give you an example. In most towns, if you want to have a home-based business, you go to City Hall and you ask for a home occupation permit. And we allow a certain types of businesses by right. So if you, for example, run an accounting business and it's mainly office work, that would be appropriate because you're not going to affect your neighbors much. You apply for a permit. We give you a standard set of conditions, which basically say you're not going to have a bunch of employees and a bunch of, you know, deliveries that are, you know, disrupting the neighborhood. And as long as you follow all of these rules and renew your permit on a, you know, semi-annual basis or however it's set up, you're compliant. Anytime you step outside of those standard conditions, we have the ability to pursue code enforcement, whether that be administrative citations or yanking your permit or both in some cases. So...
But there are some businesses that sidestep state regulations by going just through cities. For example, home beauty is allowed, but the ventilation sanitation is not conducted by the state.
Correct. Yes, there are free riders for sure. And that is something to consider here. The conversations that staff and myself have had over the last week really come down to outcomes. So if you think about it from a critical perspective, how will we know if someone's not complying with our rules? The only way we will know is through code enforcement complaints, because we're talking about indoor business. And so if they never get a permit, we likely won't know unless we get a complaint, right? What either one of these methods, and I'm arguing for one or the other, they're just different. Provide code enforcement opportunities for the city where you're having neighborhood disputes and people are not following, you know, reasonable regulations. So that to me is the greatest value here, is that when you have these neighbor disputes over this issue, you can go in and reasonably deal with those because you have rules on the books. So either method works. It's just a matter of how much control and consideration council wants put into the method. One thing that I think is worth mentioning, Josiah and I were talking about this before the meeting. Waterford's ordinance has a whole section that is dedicated to the criminal history of the applicant. Josiah, I don't want to speak for you, but essentially what he shared with me is, he says, there's significant concerns with that. And if you want to...
Sure, I'd be happy to elaborate, Sean. Yeah, we did have a conversation about it, and I did some research, and I also thought about it. So first of all, it's not an issue that was decided in the statute, right? So if a local municipality determines, hey, we want to ban felon activity, I guess they could technically write an ordinance and do so. That's precluding a felon from the right to cultivate personally inside of their home. The Adult Use of Marijuana Act does speak specifically about restrictions on felony activity for commercial activity. So for getting a license to operate a business from the state, being licensed to have a testing facility or a cultivation, felons are precluded from that activity. And there's a bunch of those bills that I described are also focused on kind of relaxing some of those standards. They're saying a lot of people in the industry who have access or their access is being limited because of a past felony history. However, with respect to the personal cultivation, I would suggest that it's not the best way to go if you're trying to keep your regulations reasonable. That's almost like saying, you know, an ex-felon can't possess beer, almost if you will, right? So despite noble intentions, I think, behind drafting that and to ensure that no criminal activity is proliferated or, you know, you're not having kind of a lot of people in the house doing gang activity cultivating marijuana, you would be stepping down a path that could potentially raise problems and not be able to stand up to a legal challenge if someone said, you know, you're restricting a personal right of a citizen, not, is not voting or something. So I would be cautious with that.
So the key here is to have reasonable regulations so you maintain the kind of control, but not so unreasonable that you put yourself open to challenge later down the road. So the only other component, and then I'll let council weigh in, that we'll need some direction on, aside from what I've said already, is if you do intend to regulate, what term would you like to see for these permits? What's the timeframe under which they'd need renewal? Do they need renewal? Those kinds of things are the detail we would need. And then that's essentially our report, unless Josiah, you have anything else?
I actually think that this is a comprehensive report before the council. So, you know, I would be open to any questions or discussion at this time.
Questions, then we'll, let's go for discussion, I think.
And it's basically based on the additional staff that we would have to do, have to have on staff to regulate and do the inspections. I think we need to regulate it, but use, like he said, the hybrid approach where they get a permit to have it at their house. And then when we have an instance where the neighbors are arguing, we've got some cause and reason to go into the home to rectify that. But I think putting in where we have to do inspections will cause too much work to a staff right now that's already stretched.
I agree with Councilmember Fossey that we need to be able to regulate it. And I think that having it in a permit where they have to follow certain rules and regulations is appropriate. And I think that just like any other business, that you have to get an annual permit, I think, is feasible. I don't think it should be like a lifetime permit. But I think annually would be fine.
Just like a business license.
Just like a business license.
I agree with both Councilmember Martinez and Fossey, pretty much so. But I discussed with our city managers some items too. And this is going to be a learning experience. And as we go along, we do have the ability to redo something, change it as we go along. And one factor that I'm concerned about because of the understaffing of our staff at this time is we must produce enough revenue through these taxes or fees that we're going to charge so that we hire a new person that handles this per se. Because we can't dump this at all in any way on our current staff.
I'm in agreement with yes, we should regulate it. And for very much so, some of the reasons I've already heard. I kind of lean towards the option of the lesser restrictive permit myself. The only question I had had to do with the 2015 ordinance that we put in here in the city regards to medical marijuana. And I think we will probably, if I'm not mistaken, cover in that when we get to the medical one. I know you were talking about there were some parts that kind of contradicted each other in some of that.
That's right.
And is that, I guess my concern was because we did put a ban on the medical part of it. So will we get to one of those later workshop?
But we will kind of unpack that down the line. And I think the uncertainty that you're picking up is exactly, you know, what I'm trying to express. And that is there are changes happening right now at the state level to the law that was just passed last year. So it's also nascent. It's also new in terms of, you know, having that industry come out of the shadows in terms of the commercial side, and then trying to regulate personal activity under it too. Things will change, and I appreciate Councilman Campbell's, you know, statement that things probably will have to be updated, you know, as we move along.
Because I just feel like we're right now saying, kind of contradicting ourselves because we're saying, yes, we're going to regulate the personal use. But we have on the books right now standing an ordinance where we're banning medical, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So I'm wondering, just kind of from a, how do we, do we deal with that ordinance first? That would take, goes off, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around, how do we, how does that procession work?
So the easiest thing to point to is the conflict, you're pulling the conflict out directly in the way that these two laws are drafted? Because the local cannot ban the personal cultivation.
But it can ban the medical.
And we did.
Yeah, we did.
That's right.
So right now, the law has changed, so now we have to reassess.
So are we going to take care of this ordinance that we passed in 2015 first before we do this one? I guess my question is...
Doesn't matter.
Well, that was my, that was kind of where I was going with this too.
We can address the medical marijuana separately, whether or not we want to permit it or not. I don't agree that we'll be taxing any of the medical marijuana, and that would be free-flowing into the personal use because there is a tax exemption from the medical marijuana, not in the personal use.
Yes, so...
Okay, so, okay, we're doing it step by step.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, so...
I was feeling it just a little bit contradictory.
And we can eliminate that and say that we consider medical marijuana as personal use. But then you are eliminating the group of five and the square footage. There's a difference in the square footage.
Yeah.
And if we allow medical marijuana and there's going to be five, that's 500 square feet, you're actually stating it's either in a greenhouse or you're going to have to allow outdoor grows.
Yeah, and I was like, are we kind of jumping ahead of ourselves here? Because we'll deal with that when we get there? Or will it all kind of come out in the wash if we deal with this one? Will it take care of itself later on? I guess my concern is, is that if we've banned one and it says that we can't ban it, I'm just kind of struggling with the fine things, and maybe I don't need to.
We can define, we can define, I've been in a lot of workshops with this dope deal. And they say that if you state that the medical marijuana grows in the, you can say that the medical marijuana grows will follow the same as personal grows. And that you get away with the five, what, the five clients or something like that?
That's right, five collective gardens.
That's it, collective gardens. Yeah, from the hippie days of the collective communes and all that.
Likewise, I'd like to comment back real quick to a statement that you made. Governor Brown has proposed combining both of them. If that happens, it's going to be a whole different ballgame.
So...
I just wondered...
I would like to put in mind, since everybody else got, I would like to permit it. But I would like to have regulations that put the city of Riverbank responsible for ensuring the health and safety of the occupants other than the person growing. It also protects the property from a grower who is not an owner. And is not an owner of the property. I can run a business outside, in a home and not get the owner's permission. But in this case, I think you need to. The other thing too is that marijuana has a different component than an embroidery business or something like that. It has discharge, which can be toxic. The, if you do a hydroponics, okay, where's your discharge going? Who's going to assess that? Are you going to allow it to go into your, fertilize your front yard? And then it goes into your aquifer? And in five years, you're going to be, start consuming some of the poisons that they use to help grow the plant. One of the other safety concerns is that the majority, large majority of the infant, that's from zero to five, contact with marijuana was in the house in spaces that were not secure enough to keep them out. And that is something that I think that we need to take responsibility of. So we need proper ventilation to make sure that there is no black mold growing and that the discharge is not going into my kitchen window or your kitchen window. We have to ensure that the safety is isolated. And I guess, does the law state to prevent the persons 20, under 21 from access?
Yes.
Access, 21, that's a pretty dang secure area. So are we going to ensure that or we're just going to permit it? What is our responsibility legally or do we just say no? And then again, addressing the medical, do we put that under the same, and can we put it under the same regulations? And have inspections? And inspections that would require a payment at the time of inspections, an annual inspection and an annual reapplication. So you'll have an inspection after reapplication, whatever that fee is, and staff will have to come with that. And then an inspection fee later on to ensure that they meet the five basic health, safety, and security for the...
I'm with you on that.
Okay.
And I get that. Let me just throw something out there.
Throw it out there.
Do we put any of those kind of regulations on beer making and wine making in our garages? I'm just throwing it out there.
There are state laws on wine, beer, and also federal laws on wine and beer.
Not for personal...
But if you're making wine in your garage and you leave it out for your children to consume, you're responsible for that. We don't put any regulations. I hear you. I do. And, you know, you're probably shocked I'm even bringing that up there. But I just, I just see that if we're, for lack of a better word, nickel and diming regulations and adding this and there, I think we need to put some ownership on the folks that are growing that and using it and that kind of thing. And kind of gets back to the same thing as, we're putting in the same category as alcohol. And we are allowed to make our own alcohol in our garages if we want to. Do we? No, because there's things with it? And are we making it safe for our children that are in our house? Well, I would hope so.
If there's a permit required, but okay, here's the difference. Let's say you're drinking a glass of wine.
Out there.
Let's say you're drinking a glass of wine, and Cal's sitting right next to you. He's not drinking wine. I'm sitting here smoking a marijuana cigarette, Cal's sitting next to me. Or a four-year-old.
Much more so than the one...
But same thing with smoking too. If you're going to smoke cigarettes in your car with the thing rolled up and you're causing...
I agree.
I'm just, I don't know.
Mayor brought up a good point about the waste and different things. And one that I've already experienced in this town at different times is the smell of marijuana is very, very pungent and strong. And I've been in homes where I could smell people smoking it across the way in the backyard. So somehow, you know, I'm an non-smoker. I have no objection with them using it. But I shouldn't be smelling it because that means I'm getting something from it. And we do need to protect from things like that, that if they're out there smoking it in the yards, it's not really fair that the wind's blowing it over my way or the, you know, if, those types of things too. And I understand what you're saying about the wine and the beer. But this particular substance can be carried in the air a lot further, and exposure can be a lot different than the wine and the beer per se.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just throwing it out there.
No, it's a good point.
I just think we need to consider all the things and be really careful with us, you know, just putting a whole bunch of regulations on there. I don't, I'm not trying to, I'm not disagreeing with you guys at all. Please don't, don't think that at all. I'm just throwing it out there.
We're not trying to put a whole bunch out there. We're trying to see what is reasonable. And if we want to do, well, how far in the reasonable realm do we want to pursue? If we just want to say, go ahead, the city washes his hand, we can do that. We can permit it and wash our hands, let them do it. Or do we take responsibility? We don't have to take responsibility. There's somewhere in the world that people have to take responsibilities for their own action.
I just want to react quickly, and then I'll pass it to Donna to Councilmember Campbell's point about the smoking. There are restrictions on smoking in public that are currently in the state law. I know that Riverbank itself has made some, you know, ordinances and issues and ordinances about smoking in public. I will say that the law explicitly allows consumption and use on private property. So if it is their home and they're inside and it goes out the window in the air, that's going to be hard to challenge. And you have to be creative in that way.
I just wanted to clarify for Ms. Jones-Cruz that in 2015, what we prohibited was medical marijuana, commercial grows, commercial sales, and outdoor personal sales. So right now on the books in Riverbank, if you have a letter from your doctor, you can grow six plants indoors, and we don't require a permit for that. That is ongoing right now. And the ordinance that we adopted last fall, that one had to do with, oh gosh, you guys made me wait so long. Oh, gosh, I should have written it down.
Prohibition of outdoor grows?
Yeah, yeah, it was outdoor grows.
Yes, that's what it was.
And Mayor, I also wanted to make an additional comment to your point about just having the medical catch up. Because the city can ban or do whatever it likes with the medical system, you could make medical follow directly behind your recreational. you could make medical follow directly behind your recreational ordinances. Right, so if you came up with a plan here for personal use, indoor cultivation of recreational marijuana up to the six-plant limit, you could restrict right there as six plants, medical marijuana too, if you'd like. You know, in advance of any potential statutory or regulatory changes that will be coming anyway.
Maybe as a, as a way to kind of get what I'm hearing into, into form, we could create a very specific detailed list of standard conditions that would apply to everybody that wants to obtain approval from the city that addresses exactly what the mayor has, has brought up. Prohibition on volatile solvents going into groundwater, term, property owner authorization if you don't own the property, allowable number of plants, location, security. So that all of the details that the mayor mentioned that, that the concern is about whose responsibilities are addressed within, essentially to get the permit, they have to agree to comply with all of these conditions. And that would be one way to address.
But it has to be reasonable enough the way you will not deter individuals from applying. Okay? Or may entice other individuals who may have 12 in their garage to cut it back to six and get the permit to where they won't be raided because their neighbors know they're there.
And just one more point, if they have 12, they're also subject to criminal penalty.
I understand that, I'm.
Talking about the.
Right. But I'm thinking six get cut down real quick and dried and rolled, I don't know what they do with it.
I think we can absolutely accomplish that. And we can even probably spell out some of the standard conditions in the ordinance.
But before we do that, I'm going to go to each individual and tell what they would like to see and then we'll come up with a consensus to give and direction to staff. So, Councilmember Fossey, what would you like to see in these ordinance, in this ordinance?
Well, limiting indoor use. Access by only those over 21. Because I do have a concern about kids having accessibility to the plants inside the home. And some type of regulation on what they can do outdoors in their private, on their private property. Because I have a concern if they're smoking in the backyard.
Okay, can we, can we?
The smoking issue on private property, I don't think there's anything to be done. I will say in terms of outdoor, a locked greenhouse, for example, on one parcel, if the six plants are in there, that is permissible.
I'm more concerned with them smoking it outside, in their property. Can't regulate that.
I don't think there's anything that you can do on their property. But, but you did raise an issue that I wanted to kind of lay out, this is another consideration. You would, if, when you're crafting a regulation and you would want to say, you know, it must be in a locked bedroom in a back XYZ, you may be being a little bit restrictive because the way that the statute is drafted, it requires it to be a locked and private space, but it can be outside of the primary dwelling on the residence. Does that make sense?
Right.
It does, except for doesn't greenhouse come into effect in 2020?
From my understanding, greenhouse is effective now, six plants under this personal.
Good, I got a greenhouse.
So it can't happen in the greenhouse.
Unaccessible to those under 21.
Absolutely.
As, as directed in the.
Right, and then the question will be, how do you ensure that? Right, what are you saying?
So, and you can take that out of the equation for indoor grow, for mold and everything. So you, we're going to have to craft it to where if it's greenhouse, certain regulations, especially watering and discharge. How are they going to collect the discharge? And, you know, how is the assessment of that discharge done? I mean, is it into a contained vat type thing where it's evaporated? I don't, that's, that's not for me to do, that's for a chemist. Okay, so you're, you're concerned with security, smoking. But is security, what else? Owner approval?
Owner approval, yes.
Okay, inspections?
I just don't think we have the personnel to do inspections, but we do inspections by complaint. Inspections.
True, but in this case, I'm not trying to sway you, but in this case, we're going to have to inspect it initially to make sure it's up to speed. And these are just hit inspections.
We don't have the personnel to do that.
Because we don't have it and we're allowing this, we have to come up with something. Just because we have a code enforcement laws. Even though we go by exception, it should be more proactive.
I agree. But got to have the personnel to do it and we just don't.
Would you allow it in case we generate enough capital?
I would say once we start generating the capital, but I don't think you're going to have people busting down the door to get permits to grow six plants.
If you have more than you can, you would expect. Okay, and water discharge, right? Yes, okay. Okay.
I want to see term limits, so I do believe that an annual relicensing should occur. I think that the property owner should have authorization. And that the cultivation site should be enclosed and secure. And then concerns about those that are under age 21 being able to have access to it. And let's see. I'm concerned about the chemicals that are used and getting into our water sewer lines. And I do believe that there should be maybe a six-month inspection after the initial license. And then when we do get complaints, who's going to enforce that?
Mine's, that would then be the police that would have to enforce that.
I think that's it.
Okay.
What if they need an appeals board?
What is, what is the budget advisory committee doing? I'm kidding.
Oh, well, I mean.
No, no.
We'll get, we'll get to that point.
An appeals board.
If it falls under our normal code enforcement process, it probably just falls under the normal appeals process we have.
So it's Maricela.
Yeah, Maricela's actually already volunteered for that, I forgot, so.
There is an appeals board set up and for water, we made an exception, made it to the planning commission. So we do have an appeals board. So, yeah, that may have to be adjusted on the membership though.
One more point. So the, the chemicals that could, could get into our water and sewer system, is this going to add a strain onto our, our, you know, processing of cleaning our water?
Depending on what we allow. There are certain limitations you can allow for certain chemicals up to a percentage. So they would have to do their own testing. And prior to discharge to our sewer system, they say they have a holding tank. They could have it, just like we do with any other industry that has this, that that discharge, if it reaches a pH or it reaches a certain level of contaminants, heavy metals, et cetera, that would have to be addressed by them. If it is discharged, there are hefty fees. There are companies here in the city that have, would prefer having a $25,000 a month fee than clean up their water.
Well, we would know where that is, that discharge is coming from if it's.
No, but we can, that's when the spot inspections goes by, it doesn't have to do the entire thing. They can go by and take a look at the discharge of, and do that, are they restricted to watering day? I'm kidding.
Keep going, I've got a list, go.
No, it's now your turn.
It's me, I thought Cal was next.
No, you're going to be after her. Okay, you can go next.
She can go, I don't care.
Go, go.
I'll be waiting on you.
No, go.
You're sure?
We could have been finished by now if you hadn't horsed.
Oh, we're talking about water.
Okay. First of all, I think the ordinances need to be reasonable and they need to be enforceable that we create. I agree with most everything that Councilman Fossey and Martinez has said. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the law that it states that the marijuana has to be grown in a locked room that has proper ventilation, et cetera, and whatnot. Is that correct?
A locked structure, yes.
Okay, how in the world are we going to know that's happening if we don't check it? And if we don't check it, especially in the beginning, I think when it first starts for the first, say, three or four months, we have to be very hard-nosed about this. And I understand Councilman Fossey's concern about understaffing. So we need to, when we come up with our revenues on this, make sure that we have enough that even if we had to borrow from another account to get it started, when that money comes in, we know we can replace it. Because I think it's really critical that when we first began, we run a tight ship and show that we are doing the things to make sure it is legal and doesn't contaminate. Because if we just say, give them the permit and let them do it, we're not going to know that. And I think we're going to run into problems.
Councilman, and to your point about reasonableness, I think that, you know, when looking at the fees, that would be part of the, you know, evaluation of reasonableness. So if you were saying, well, we needed to charge fees at this amount to permit, you know, in order to have code enforcement, you know, that would be kind of considered in the totality of the circumstances right there.
Man, I thought I was conservative, but, good, great. Where did we start? I was all for permitting this, but good lord. If you're going to permit it, then permit it. And if you're going to go, I don't even know what to say.
You have a list.
Yeah, okay, first off, I'm all for permitting. I'm for the middle one down here. And I just think it's absolutely crazy to think that you're going to get people down there to sign up and get a permit when you're going to put all these restrictions on it, you're crazy. They're not going to do that. So it's like, pick one or the other, I don't know, I could be, I could be way out there. But isn't this a green product? Isn't it supposed to be a green product? It's rhetorical question, sorry, looking up there. Isn't it supposed to be a green product? And what is this, do we really up here know what kind of water discharge we're going to have? Seriously, if you're going six plants in your yard? I don't, maybe I'm way out there too, but I thought this was supposed to be a green product. I can't imagine someone, I just need to stop.
Okay, I'll, I'll go on from that. It is a green product.
I guess, I guess I'm just having a hard time thinking that people that are growing marijuana for whatever reason and all the benefits and whatever, whatever, that you're going to be putting all kinds of chemicals on your green product. I, I just, so, I don't know, maybe I am just way out there and don't have a pick and clue about any of this, which probably is so, because, anyway. But I just don't think that we need to, I guess I'm just trying to picture myself growing five rose bushes and it's not the same thing apparently.
Northern California, up in the Redwood area, up in the.
But they're growing for big, huge production and selling. We're talking about six people growing plants for them to smoke themselves.
At least growth, they have certain fertilizers which is damaging the environment. So if I can grow six plants and I can make that grow a lot better, not harming the plant, but harming the environment, who knows what I will do? So what you can do.
There are a lot of chemicals I put on, you know, my yard.
It's my turn now.
I know, go ahead, I apologize. Yeah, I do.
Okay, so let's say, let's say you have a particular amount of fertilizer that you can have a suggested fertilizer for your pot plants. So whatever it is, your phosphates, whatever, that you allow in the city of Riverbank. So when you do an inspection and you see some of the illegal fertilizers, that's in violation. I'm not going to see people pounding down the doors if there's another punitive action for those that are growing outside the ordinance. There are some cities that have said $1,000 a day fine. And they have put liens against the building, the, the home. So if they are growing and it's in a house that they're renting, they haven't told the owner, the owner's going to be in a rude awakening. If the owner did give permission, then the owner is now responsible or culpable for that fine. They have found that to be quite effective in Patterson. They found that quite effective in Santa Cruz or Santa, somewhere, I think it's Santa Cruz, that has been doing this for years. And I'm sure they got away with it. I believe it should be permitted with inspections. Inspections to cover the proper ventilation, ensure that there's no damage to the home in black mold if it's grown indoors. And if it is a greenhouse, are there safety precautions to avoid what happened two nights ago in Sacramento? I believe that you do need the owner approval. That you have a checklist exactly what you're looking for when you're going back for the inspection. And that your water discharge is not containing any chemicals not approved in the riverbank grow because we do have to protect our aquifer. And that it has to be ensuring the safety of those not only in the house, but those who may have access to it, like a neighbor across the way going through a back panel of your, your greenhouse or getting into the home. I don't know if iron, I would hate to see this, but iron bars in a, in a grow house or in a, in a grow room. But there has to be standards that you want to permit to keep the building and keep the personnel safe. I do believe in inspections, has to occur. I do have, I do believe that it is reoccurring in the permit, similar to a business license. But it is not a business, we have to say it is not a business. And that, and that personal use would have to be, you, you can establish the approximate value of one plant that is grown throughout a year, multiply it how many times you can cultivate. And say, okay, we're going to say it's $250 because that would be the value of one plant in the 36 that you can grow in a growing season. Or by force, by additional fertilizer, you can get 72 in a growing season. I learned that, I didn't, it's not by experience. So I believe we've provided direction to staff. Is there anything we else need to do? Is there any additional, I know you have concern. Wait until we come back on round three of this.
I'm just not for the, I, and I, I just, I'm not for all the inspection and, and that much regulation. So you guys are, you guys are picking number one here, so you might as well just go for number one, the first option and the second option. So I'm hearing that's, it's the first option with regulation, am I right?
I, I'm not for that also, I don't think we.
I'm hearing several of you for option one with all the heavy regulations and two for the so-so regulations, that's what I'm hearing.
May I just say one thing? In the inspecting of the facility that it's going to be in, that falls under kind of building code. And that's what the state says, one of the things we have to concern. I don't want a bunch of petty little laws on this, but in the beginning, and I know there are people in our community, because I grew up here, that would do this. They'll use the room or a closet and grow it and it won't be ventilated correctly. Now, I'm saying that we need to look specifically at that part. I don't want to come back every week or every, you know, say, two weeks or whatnot. I want it to be limited, but in the beginning, we do have to have an adequate facility, otherwise we're not doing our job.
We can charge a fee, right, for the inspections?
Yes.
Well, I guess.
So I think an initial inspection is probably good.
And I guess it'd be like inspecting, you know, my hot water heater that I had to pay 75 bucks for and have them come out and take a look at, so, there you go. 75 bucks for and have them come out and take a look at, so, there you go.
Then that covers the cost of the void.
Do you have a smog inspection? Yes.
No, they come in and look at my hot water heater.
And then only an inspection when there's a complaint. I, I don't, I don't know about constantly going back, I just...
No one said the word constantly.
No constant.
No constant. But if somebody applies, let's say I apply, I pay, let's say, $250. Now, I have to establish the facility. Before you issue that permit, am I in compliance? Then you issue the permit. Okay? So you say, "I'm going to be back in six months to inspect the grow." And in that, you take a soil sample. It cost me $39 to have that soil sample done, and it cost me...
Why are you doing a soil sample?
For chemicals? That's how you get the water discharge?
I, I'm, I'm...
Okay.
I just don't know that they're going to have that much chemicals. It's only six plants. It's not like they're growing it to sell it on the street. I think if you're looking at somebody that's built, that's doing 24 plants, they're definitely going to have chemicals to make it produce more, but when you're just doing six plants, I can't see them using all kinds of chemicals and doing everything they can.
How big is a mature, healthy marijuana plant?
I have no idea, I've never grown one.
It's about eight feet tall and about six feet wide.
I didn't inhale, no, I'm just kidding.
And I have no many, I have no idea how many ounces you can produce out of one eight-foot-tall, six-foot-wide circumference marijuana plant. But I bet it's more than a person can consume in a year.
Probably about three to five, I think. That's not a scientific, you know, I just, that's what I would guess. And then, and then again, if you have up to six, it is a significant amount. I mean, I'm, I'm speaking from understanding that people who cultivate personal marijuana under the, you know, regulations of their local still are diverting marijuana to the black market or elsewhere.
Or they're going to, or they're going to official grows and...
I mean, they're going to be satisfied with the grow. I mean, it's not like they're going to be cultivating it and doing all these chemicals trying to make it produce more, because six plants is enough. Well, that's true.
It grows and matures in about, I think, three months, doesn't it?
Cycle, yes.
But we could also say that we have the right to inspect within 12 months. And that right doesn't say that we're going to do it.
No, that does not.
To say that we...
But, but you give them notification that we want to come in and inspect next Wednesday.
But maybe we don't, maybe we do. You never know.
Well, I also think that in the permitting process or our list of regulations, that we need to remind people that this is not, what they're growing is not for sale. It is for personal use only. I think that we just need to remind people that that's the purpose of this. Put it in there somewhere.
And then the one caveat is they can give it away.
Yep.
And talking about making sure that, you know, if you're renting and you're, that can all be taken care of by the homeowner, putting in a lease that you can't put in a still and, you know, make your own beer or wine, and you can't have a grow. The, we don't need to regulate that as the city, the property owner can do that in a lease. I just don't think that we need to put ourselves in, in one more thing that we have to be responsible for. What happens to the, the property owners and...
No. You're putting it onto the renter.
If I'm, if I'm a, if I'm a property owner and I don't want those kind of renters, I would put something in my lease.
Well, I do know people who have rented in the city of Riverbank who did not realize that right across from a Reverend Neil was people using heavily, and when they found that out, they kicked them out. But they, you don't usually put that into your renter's agreement.
Well, we don't, haven't had, we haven't in the past had this be legal. We haven't had this be legal before. So I can see where some of that can be taken up by the homeowners if they're renting it out. I don't necessarily see that we need to put that in there.
Okay, okay, let's, let's, let's just go. Donna, when we do a, a permit and we're going through, even if it is a, if I'm renting a building, and I'm going to rent that building for X purpose, do I have that property owner's permission? Do I, do I as the renter have to get the property owner's permission to do modifications?
Do modifications, yes.
Why? Can't they do that in the rental agreement? No. We require it. Yeah.
It needs to be, I, I don't know that we need to have it in our...
Oh, okay.
And not, not all grows require modifications. There are, there is equipment now that just plugs into your regular electrical plug. You don't need the high-tech wiring. There's, you know, hydroponics that use, you know, pumps that just keep circulating the water around. There's a lot of innovation out there now since we've had this 20 years of medical marijuana. And ventilation systems too, that fit in the window and just plug into the wall. So there may not be permits associated with creating your own grow.
But we need to see that, to know that it's going on, right?
Correct.
Otherwise, we have no idea what they're doing in that little locked room.
That's true, but we don't inspect home occupations right now. You know, if somebody comes in and says, "I'm just doing an office," until we get a complaint, we don't know that it's a construction office and they've got five trucks parked in the driveway. You know, we don't go out and inspect those type of permits.
This is a little different because of contamination, odor, and things like that, though. That's what my concern is there. I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree that it's on the same basis.
So what is reasonable to one person, not reasonable to another? That reasonable is no regulations, let it up to the homeowner. Do we permit it or do we not permit it?
That rhetorical, are you asking me?
I'm hearing a lot of now, "Let's don't permit it, let the homeowners take care of it."
I think it's going on right now with medical. You know, they're...
It is going on.
We've, at least we haven't gotten any complaints, but I can see a good portion of this could be outreach too. You know, having handouts or having presentations that talk about best management practices and, and, you know, if you need help trying to figure out your electrical, come see us. We could focus on that part of it too, the outreach, when somebody comes to us and wants to establish a grow. Just a thought.
Why do, if we loosely permit it or not permit it, why would they come for advice?
They're new at it, they want to do it right.
All right, I'm going to go for roll, roll call. It's not a vote, but direction. Councilmember Fossey.
Am I voting for?
You're not voting, you're giving direction to staff and they're going to tabulate it.
Yes.
Guess what?
Giving direction to staff on all the things that we've just discussed. Good luck, staff.
We're after this.
Mayor, might I suggest that it might be helpful for us to, because it really seems that this has come down to a key issue, which, which is inspections and whether we want to do them in the initial phase or not, or do periodic inspections. Those, that seems to be the keystone issue. We all, it sounds like the council generally agrees that having reasonable conditions is fair. The question of enforcement and inspections is really where we sit. So if there's some direction along those lines, we can craft an ordinance that basically gets most of what we've heard tonight in there, but we just, but that's a key component of this, in my mind.
So does staff have direction?
We have direction on everything except for the inspections part, which is...
I believe periodic inspections is, I think, the route that we should go at first until we see what kind of funds are coming in to bring on a person full-time, and then we can look at it on a more direct inspection list.
How do we handle backflows? They're done each year?
Yeah, so...
You, you contract out?
Correct.
And the owner of the property pays for it?
Right.
I believe that in, in the beginning, when they inspect, we need to know that they have adequate ventilation, however it's put in there, adequate water drainage, et cetera, and whatnot. After that, we can do a six-month inspection, a year inspection. I'm more lenient on that. Because I want to know that they're doing the correct thing right in the beginning, because that's very important, because if they don't, they'll continue to do the wrong thing. And I look at that as like, when I've had to convert my fireplace over to gas, they had to come out and inspect it, so to make sure it was right. So I look at it in that sense to make sure it follows what the state says the mandates are for having the adequate facility to grow the product, not against them growing it. I want them to grow it correctly, though. And I want it to be down the road, six-month inspections, year inspections. I'm more lenient with that, because I'm also concerned that, from figures I've read, that if you don't look at it some, a little bit, your crime rate may just go off the wall. Because crime has a tendency to grow in everything I've read in communities where the marijuana has been legal. And we have to keep that in mind, too.
I think permitting, yes, and I think inspections, yes, and I think the person who wants to do the growing should pay for the inspection. And we should have the spec, inspection, like, maybe six months into when their permit becomes effective, and then maybe six, seven, eight months later on down the road, again, just to make sure everything is still secure, still growing properly, instead of six plants, 12 plants, or whatever. So that's where I am.
And in a home beauty, when they reapply each year, do they still have to have an inspection from the fire department? Or is that just the initial setup?
Donna? Inspections, when a beauty salon has an in-home, you know, a home occupation permit, do they, do they have an initial fire inspection for occupancy, or is it because, if they're under a certain threshold, do they not even get called out for that?
Far as I know, just, the salon has an initial inspection, as does the...
But home-based, home-based.
Home-based, right.
Yeah, okay.
Home-based childcare does as well.
Do they have an annual inspection after reapplication?
Don't believe so, but I can find out for you.
Unless something changes, I'm almost positive they don't. But childcare may be different.
Yeah, a lot of the swans are all upset with that, but go ahead. Your turn.
No, is it one-time inspection? Did I hear that? You think it's a one-time inspection?
Yes.
I'm for permitting, and the inspection thing, I'm still up in there about it, I guess.
For permitting, for the reasons I've stated, an inspection, at least initially. And I would say one time in the first year, and then upon reapplication. And just, and it doesn't have to be a detail, just ensure that what we saw is still, because you know, you would know your customers after 20 years of dope use.
Okay, so I don't think that we need an additional formal vote on that. I, I'm hearing that the majority of the council are in favor of some form of inspections. We'll build that into the ordinance. When the ordinance comes forward, the discussion can be had again about what, you know, to what degree. So we have enough direction to, to, to build the, the ordinance at this point.
Can I make it clear that I'm all right with, and I'm for inspecting, starting off with, but some of them, I...
Limited.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
You do it every three years when you inspect your smog.
Get your smog, get your plants inspected, there you go.
Do you have direction from us?
Yes, Mayor.
Anything else from us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief is going, "God." Item 6.3, East Riverbank Industrial Master Plan Phasing Strategy.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight's report will be given by John Anderson, our contract planner. John probably fell asleep and he's back. So this item was a product of strategic planning this year, and in an effort to stay on, on task and on, on track, John's made sure that we have the report when we said that we would. Council had want, has, for a long time, looked at options to create an environment, an industrial environment in and around the Riverbank industrial complex that, you know, would create basically an industrial area. So it's a, it's a big project. John's going to step you through ways that we can maybe accomplish this financially, since it's going to take a number of years. John's come up with a phasing strategy to do so. I'll turn that over to him.
Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, J.B. Anderson, planning contract planner with the city of Riverbank. I think Annabelle maybe doesn't like me, so she put me behind marijuana discussion for the second time, but that's okay. I'm here. East Riverbank Industrial Master Plan. It's a, it's a concept that we've talked about probably for over a year, I think, probably a lot longer than that. The city has an adopted, updated municipal service review. We were successful in convincing the local agency formation commission to allow us to expand our sphere to include some of this property. The, the, the general plan obviously gives us general guidance as to what this area might be. It's more residential. I got to tell you, it's more residential than industrial. That's the current general plan designations. There's this thing called the North County Corridor that's supposed to be releasing an environmental document. It's two years late. So eventually, that's going to come out, and that's, that's going to talk about this east-west corridor reassignment of 108, and going to complicate our lives as it relates to circulation on the east side of town. The industrial opportunities that are being provided, the job opportunities that are being provided by the former Army ammunition plant, Riverbank Industrial Complex, are wonderful. We have a, we have a manager that seems to be doing an excellent job, not seems, is doing an excellent job, continuing to use that as an asset for this community to create jobs, which is, which is what we need. And so we can, we can live, work, and play within the same local jurisdiction without having to commute over the hill. This concept is taking it to the next level. Riverbank Industrial Complex certainly has a lot left to, to go. There's a lot of work. Debbie's done an excellent job, there's more of that. It's rail-served opportunity. In fact, some of the businesses out there are rail-served. Expansion of industrial development on the east side could also be rail-served. The North County Corridor could provide easy access to the 99 corridor, east-west. So, you know, we've got opportunities for some type of distribution. We're not on the I-5 corridor, we're not specifically on 99, but certainly with those two other opportunities, rail and North County Corridor, we could have something there on the east side. So we talked about this the last time, we talked about money, and we talked about, you know, grant opportunities, planning grant opportunities, and quite frankly, you know, staff is not done looking at this, will continue to look at it. We have a grant writer that is working with us in the, with the Riverbank Industrial Complex, working with staff in general, trying to identify any state, federal, local grant opportunities to allow us to move to the next level, you know, to use, you know, OPM, other people's money, actually, it's tax dollars, for this type of effort. But at this point, I, I'm coming empty-handed, I'm sorry. I don't have anything that I can say that we've got available to us. So what does that mean? That means that the city of Riverbank, which is, you know, obviously already strapped for funds in many ways, especially if you're talking about additional inspection services for yet another permit process, would have to, if they feel it's appropriate, need, would need to allocate funds for this type of project. So what I was asked in the last strategic planning session was to kind of draft a phasing strategy, if I could, with the type of work that might be needed out in this area we want to call, you know, East Riverbank Industrial Master Plan. So that's what I've done, and that's what I'm presenting to you tonight. So I'm going to go through a little PowerPoint presentation. The staff report is obviously published, and also includes a proposal that I did, you know, probably a year and a half ago. Really fundamentally, you know, there hasn't been significant changes. The, the large dollar numbers there are associated with outside services, including infrastructure analysis and, you know, environmental compliance. So that's really the lion's share of the numbers that you're going to be seeing coming through. So council has requested a phasing strategy. That's, that's what I'm going to talk about tonight. Y East, East Riverbank location, we've talked about, North County Corridor. Jobs, jobs, jobs. Very, very important for Riverbank to have those opportunities. We're fortunate that we have lands designated for industrial development in this community that provide opportunities for jobs for residents of Riverbank as well as residents... that provide opportunities for jobs for residents of Riverbank, as well as residents, you know, of First Anaslas County. The area in, in question that we're referring to is this area here outlined in red. Um, it's, it's area immediately east and north of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, um, and it's primarily ag. The, the future vision for Riverbank Industrial Complex, 'cause we have an adopted specific plan, um, has a set tone and character. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a development path that will be followed and adhered to unless modified by the city council. So the idea is that we would build on this vision with future industrial development opportunities easterly of the Riverbank Industrial Complex. So, I talked about the fact that we were able to, um, convince, we were able to receive approval from council's, um, LAFCO of expanded sphere. I prepared a scope this August of 16, and then we talk about phasing strategy. So here's, here's our sphere of influence, which was acted upon and adopted by LAFCO as of July of 2016. The area we're talking about is the area on the east side here that's cross-hatched. So the master plan development essential steps, step one, you know, always, we always start out with opportunities and constraints. You know, we gotta prepare some kind of a, a master plan or vision for the area in question. And then, then a lion's share of it is talking with the public about what their expectations are of this area, what potential impacts it might bring to them, how it might affect their daily lives, and then obviously how traffic, circulation, water, sewer would be handled with this type of project. We develop a final master plan, and then we have to go through environmental compliance. And then, once we do all that, we wrap it up and we present it to Planning Commission, City Council for hearings, and then ultimately to Stanislaus County LAFCO for some type of an annexation action, either all or a portion thereof. So, in the project analysis, the master plan process, um, I've broken it down into, you know, four potential bite-sized pieces, can handle, happen all at once, can happen even slower than this, smaller pieces if that's appropriate, but I tried to break it up into logical, logical phases. And some of the phases are expensive. Phase three is very expensive, $105,000. A lot of that has to do with the environmental analysis that would be necessary to support any type of action by this council to approve the master plan. So phase one, what is, what is $60,000 by us? We have, we get an administrative draft master plan, which means we went through opportunities, opportunities and constraints, we've done some public outreach, and we've developed some kind of a vision. Gives us our draft MDP, revised MDP, and then a final plan. Phase two, $50,000, initiate, initiate, notice I said initiate, not complete, initiate the environmental process. So that, would that, that would include preparing an initial study and notice of preparation, which is, uh, obviously what we've done now with Crossroads West specific plan. Start the scoping process, coordinate with subconsultants, any special studies that are necessary, bugs and bunnies, water, sewer, whatever it might be. Phase three, again, is the, is the, is a heavy hitter. That's the, that's the big bucks. That's the environmental impact report. That's preparing a draft report, final report, and then, then this thing called mitigation monitoring reporting program, which is a culmination of all of the identified impacts and demonstrating how we intend to mitigate those impacts as we implement this plan. Phase four, um, little, little softer on the, on the wallet. However, you know, we have the public involvement, we have hearings, Planning Commission, City Council, and then ultimately, we have, you know, an annexation or several annexation proposals that need to be presented and acted upon by Stanislaus LAFCO. Through here, through a, yet another public hearing process. So one, one thing I wanted to, I wanna point out, and that's not to suggest that council has to take action today, tomorrow, next year, or, or whatever, but we need to keep in mind everything that impacts us as we move forward with this effort, or quite frankly, any annexation effort, is that the municipal service review we had LAFCO act on has a shelf life of five years. That shelf life expires as of July 24th, 2021, which means, not only for the Crossroads West annexation project, but for any annexation request the city might wanna engage in, we have to present, and LAFCO would have to take action on those, uh, annexation requests before our MSR expires. Or, quite frankly, we just have to update it, which is exactly what we did the last round, but that's additional expense, okay? Last, last time MSR update was, I don't know, 35, 40 grand. I mean, there is another expense that you have to consider when you look at the long timeframe associated with this type of an action. The other issue that I wanna tack about, and the aerial that I showed was, was, was right on point, and that is we're dealing with agricultural lands, um, with Crossroads West on the west side, and also with a master plan on the east side. And on the, on the east side, um, those agricultural lands include existing Williams Act land contracts. And what you see here is an exhibit that shows in green all those properties on the east side that are under the Williams Act contract. What does that mean? That means there's extra steps that have to be taken in order for those properties to be developed in urban state. Um, cities certainly can, can assume the Williams Act contracts. Historically, I don't think we've ever done that. These Williams Act contracts existed before, um, the city expanded their sphere of influence and before the contract, um, and so, so, so the city of Riverbank didn't have the ability to protest those, um, those Williams Act land contracts, so they're valid, so they're still valid. And the property owners received the tax benefits associated with that. And it's just a fact of, you know, working on this east side and, and dealing with, you know, these particular properties in que, in question. So, um, that's pretty much my presentation, um, break it down. Staff report talks about all the numbers in general, and it's really up to your, up to the council, I guess, and give staff, give us direction as to how you guys would like to see this thing proceed, or not, and what kind of timeframe, you know, you would think would be appropriate. You can, you can, um, look at these phases that I've broken down, um, as, as budget years, you know, theoretically. So what I'm suggesting here is that, you know, you're looking, looking at expenditures over four budget years as presented here. Or they could be combined, or they could be drawn out even further. So I'm here to answer questions and...
I guess what I'd like to add, too, is that Marisol and I, just depending on council's direction tonight, will work on figuring out if there's a way we can start to work on step one during this coming budget year. We've kind of already started those conversations. The other two components I think are important here is, if this plan is added into our capital projects list, um, it is legal for us to use impact fees or proportions of them to pay for this project. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a totally general fund expense. Um, it's a pretty common method that other communities use. Secondly, um, if we believe that the project will eventually get to a point where it builds, um, what a lot of other communities have done, for example, Turlock, is they've created a fee for when these industrial projects build, they pay the city back for doing all of this work, 'cause there's tremendous benefit to the, the industrial businesses. So, just a couple extra things for council to consider.
Those are, those are very good points, um, and it's customary that when a master plan or a specific plan is ultimately adopted by jurisdiction, that there's a fee that's established that when properties develop within this defined area that receive benefit from all this work, that they would pay a reimbursement amount. Generally, it's per acre. There could be some other equivalent, depending on the type of land use, whether it's residential, commercial, that kind of thing. But def, definitely, but it's, uh, it's the dollars up front, and then wait for reimbursement. That's, that's the, that's the issue, really, and it really becomes a budgetary, budgetary matter, so, anyway.
Williamson Act, those property governing it, what's the decay process?
Well, um, let me go to that slide. The Williams, Williamson Act, um, I'm not, I'm not sure...
They're already in, starting decay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if you have much experience, or this council has much experience in dealing with Williamson Act. Um, Williamson Act contract is a 10-year contract, automatically renews, you know, on, on, um, actually, actually, it's a 10-year contract initially, but it automatically renews. So if you don't renew it, then, um, it, you could actually literally get out of the Williamson contract in about nine years. When a, when a property is under the Williamson Act and annexed into a city, um, especially under these terms where the city didn't have the ability to protest a contract, you know, the city has the option to either assume the Williamson Act contract, or, or to take motion to cancel the Williamson Act contract. The problem with that is the Department of Consumer, um, Department of Conservation at state level then would, um, assess an, some, a fee, typically a fee, and it's 12 and a half percent of the value of the land at time of, uh, Williamson cancellation, which can be fairly substantial. So that, that is an issue, um, not, yeah, it's, it's an ish, it is an issue that would have to be dealt with at the time that any annexation request would be considered by LAFCO.
So if I had property and I had it, uh, I'm in the fifth year of my current contract, I can state my, um, desire not to have it renewed, based on in five years, it could now become industrial or whatever.
That's right, that's right. And you could file, you could actually, what the instrument you would do, you would file would be a notice of nonrenewal, and then within nine years, the property would come out of the contract.
But we have no idea when these contracts were initiated.
I haven't done any research on that. And, and the other, well, that's a good point. The other thing is, I haven't done any research to determine if any of these properties have physically filed notice of nonrenewal, so I don't know the answer to that either. And I, and, and I don't, because we haven't done public outreach, other than through these discussions that we've had in public forum, you know, I'm not sure what the individual property owner's feelings are relative to being included in such an effort. That's another part of the public outreach program. Because, because the, the general, I mean, the adopted general plan that, that, that this council took action on back in '08, you know, about 65 to 70% of these lands that we're talking about were designated for other purposes besides industrial. Not much industrial here, so, and we're, so that would be a change.
Maybe the ag mitigation issues come into play, or is that taken care of with all the LAFCO stuff?
Ag mitigations, ag mitigation issues and the policy that this council took action on would absolutely come into effect at time of development. The Williamson Act contracts gives yet another little, little, little angle, little angle to deal with. Yes, absolutely.
Possibly Swainston.
Well, Swainston Hawk is an issue, right, absolutely. So, and as the mayor is well aware, I mean, that's, you know, we've got, we've got a mitigation obligation as part of the certified EIR for the general plan that suggests that we are gonna do just that, mitigate for Swainston Hawk, not only, well, not only for the Swainston Hawk, for the animal itself, but also for the foraging habitat that they rely on. Well, it just becomes a mitigation measure, it doesn't necessarily hold up the project. It's a, it's a, it's a, an encumbrance, it's, it's a, it's a mitigation obligation that has to be satisfied before urban development occurs. Anyway, so that's, I mean, there's any other...
If we get to, let's say, starting at phase three, and then we have, uh, someone coming in and wanting to, uh, develop behind the, uh, Riverbank Industrial Complex, they could pick up cost for phase three, if...
Yes.
Phase three could be three years.
And I, I'm assuming there would be some type of contractual relationship, like an advanced funding agreement between the development group and the city that outlines obligations and assumptions, and provides a mechanism, quite frankly, like the, like, the city manager suggested, where we can recoup some of the upfront investments that council has made, you know, to further this along. So it's not only, it's not only, it would not only be a financial obligation to finish, but it could be a financial obligation to reimburse for work that's been done at that point.
This has a tremendous, um, advantage and opportunities for the city once this is completed, as seen with Turlock. They have shovel-ready, which, you know, we do not there, but...
Well, the...
Eventually, we'll have the North County Corridor right there in 2092.
Well, so I worked on that WISP project, and I can tell you that the, the plan came first, and then the infrastructure came. So once they had the plan, then they started hunting for grants and, uh, and roadways. So they made, they set the table, essentially, and so this is the first step in that, in doing that, basically.
I just had a, I just had a comment. I mean, I think through a strategic plan process, I think you heard us all very clearly, all of us sitting in the room here, that this was pretty important, and I just wanted to thank you for putting it out there. I really liked the plan, and, and I think the phasing is an excellent way to do it, and it kind of takes it down and breaks it into chunks, which is exactly what we were looking for, what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Likewise, I think you, you've got the right idea of doing it in phases. I also think it goes with a strategic plan, and I think it would complement the existing RIC that's out there now. And I've also talked to a couple people, Modesto is going to be pushing and increasing their northeast development commercially also for business parks, too. So if we can get the jump a little bit, it might benefit us.
Help to see it in, uh, smaller chunks. So, and I like the fact that you brought up that we don't have to have all of the funding upfront. There are ways to try to work it in so that it may be feasible for us to do it. No promises, but...
Anyone from the public wish the comment? There's only one public member. Sayin' none. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Okay, we proceed to item seven, 7.1, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since, very brief comment, just to let council know and community know that the next, uh, meeting, the first meeting in May for city council will, aside from a couple small items of, of general city business, will be primarily focused on, on the Riverbank Industrial Complex, the transfer, the memorandum of understanding, any potential RFPs for master developer, pretty much the whole buffet of, of things that, that, um, the city's been working on for a real long time. So, uh, be prepared to chat about it and, um, and hopefully provide some direction, additional direction to staff. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? We'll proceed with, uh, 7.2, council member Fosse.
Nothing.
Member Campbell.
Just like to say that I did, uh, visit the new veterans, uh, facility on Sylvan and, uh, Coffee, and, uh, as Eddie said, it was very nice. There were well over 1,000 people in that facility when I went over. I spent about a half hour just greeting, talking to people and whatnot, very impressed and was very enthused to see all these veterans getting the recognition.
House member Barbara Martinez.
Um, I attended the first responders of Stanislaus County. There was a recognition, uh, dinner that was given for them, and it was very, um, well-attended. It also was in the new veterans center. It was very nice just to be able to see those that were being recognized for, um, their outstanding service. And then, um, we, let's see, Fosse and Sean and council member Campbell and I, we went up to Sacramento to our legislative, um, action day. Um, I, I do believe that our, um, our folks in, uh, our Capitol Building are listening to us. I, I, I think it was well worth our while going there and just letting them know about our concerns that we have for our community and our cities, and everybody has pretty much the same concerns, but just to hear from the city of Riverbank, I think, was very impressive. They know who we are, they know what our concerns are, and we're just appreciative that they have that day for us to go up and talk to them and to, uh, let them hear from us. And I think that's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to just thank all of you that are sitting up here for all your hard work and bringing all this to the table. We've got a lot of decisions to make, and we couldn't do it without all the reports and the stuff that we read from you guys. Uh, stuff you give us is very important and very helpful.
So just thanks for that, and we've got a lot to do here. Keep on going.
It is, and I, I want to expand, and I appreciate who's on the dais. I really do appreciate the discourse that we've had and the discussion and the disagreements and the agreements. Also want to remind everyone, this Saturday, April 29th, is Love Riverbank. We have the county coming on in to provide services to the homeless. We also have a planned community service starting at 0800 in front of the community center, so be there. With that, we're going to go into closed session consisting of item eight point one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency representative Sean Scully, city manager, employee organizations, Riverbank miscellaneous employees, Riverbank mid-management bargaining units. And at this time, anyone from the public wishing to comment on item eight point one may do so now. They have a total of five minutes to do so. Seeing no public member, we now go to closed session, adjourn the call.
We reconvene the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meeting on April 25, 2017. Report from closed session, item 9.1, report on closed session on item 8.1 conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. At this time we are adjourned.[1686.36][1686.36](Coughs)